I will call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. We'll begin by invocation. Everyone would bow their heads. Gracious God, grant her of all things great and small, be with us this evening as we work for the good of all students in our school system. Help us to listen to each other, to work together, and to make decisions that serve the needs of our students, teachers, and administrators. We pray that you comfort those who have suffered from Hurricane Floyd, including not only New Hanover County students, but also those who may be here from other counties and are currently living in New Hanover County. Be with the students and parents as they must deal with not only being relocated, but also having to deal with the damage to their homes. Help them to know there are individuals working to make sure they can help overcome this harm. We're thankful for all the volunteers who have come to our county and the other affected counties around us. Help them to continue to reach out and serve those in need of help. We pray now for those who served to protect us both at home and abroad. We say a special prayer for all our servicemen and women and for their families. We're reminded that young men are still dying in the Middle East. We pray for those serving in law enforcement, emergency responders, and for the many power workers who have come to our aid. Watch over them, keep them safe as they do their work and as they travel home. These things we humbly ask. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is our microphone some...
She's going.
If they would introduce themselves, tell us, we know they're all from Ashley, but tell us what grade they're in.
All right. I'm Alexis Swan, choral director at Ashley High School new this year. And before you is the section leaders of Eagle Ensemble and Honors Ensemble at Ashley High.
I'm Will, in 12th grade.
I'm Sidney, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Kate, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Allison, and I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Abby, and I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Easton, and I am in 12th grade.
I am Cadet Command Sergeant Major Juwan Laura, I am in 12th grade.
My name is Captain Zachary Craig, I am in 11th grade.
My name is Cadet First Sergeant Christian Zalea, and I am in the 12th grade.
My name is Cadet Captain Dewan Watkins Brown, I'm in 11th grade.
Good evening, I am Mass Sergeant retired Jose Dennehy. I am the father of Superman, also known as Carlos Sergio Dennehy, who was my son who just passed away on 24 August.
Thank you. Well, since everybody introduced themselves, I guess I don't need to. But they were, the honor guard was from New Hanover High School where Bob Morgan is the principal, and also Lieutenant Colonel Mark Huffer. And the national anthem obviously was from Ashley High School, so I want to thank them for being here. Would you please call the roll?
F.R.D. Higgins Jr.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Lysa E. Step.
Here.
Bruce, I'm sorry, Donald S. Page.
Here.
Bruce T. Shell.
Here.
David L. Morgan.
Here. You have before you the agenda, are there any additions or deletions, sir? None at this time. Okay.
Would for approval of the agenda?
I have a motion, I'll hear a second. I have a second. All those in favor, sign five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is approved. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have the July 10th, 2018 special meeting minutes, the July 18th, 2018 interim meeting minutes, July 18th, we also had a redistricting work session minutes, and August 29th interim meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve all of those minutes?
Please for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Next item is called to the audience. None. Okay, I don't have anything, so I assume there is no call of the audience tonight. I have no problem with her speaking. You just need to make sure you give your information to the secretary so we have... All right, so I would remind you, each speaker is limited to three minutes. However time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature.
Hi, I'm a little unprepared this evening. I wasn't planning on speaking, but um...
Can you identify yourself? Yes, if you would.
Um, I just, I was brought to my attention today that...
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I apologize. I'm Angela Davis. I live in Hanover Heights off Shipyard Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think you all are familiar with me now. I just wanted to maybe remind everybody to take a step back. I know getting this redistricting done is very important, but seeing the appendix G today where I think it's going to be brought before you guys decide to push forward, put it on hold, and maybe I'm incorrect in saying that, but I just, I was a little disheartened when I saw that. Um, I know there's been a lot going on, and everybody just needs to take a step back. I know they're trying to get it pushed through before November. There's a lot of people without homes. I've been helping coworkers without homes. My kids are important, and that's the one thing I can think about. They're safe where they're at. They're back in school and they're safe. So I just, I maybe wanted to say that. And one thing I wanted to bring up about the storms, and it went upon my last speech where I told you guys I lived in the home I live in, my father-in-law built in the 50s, and we've paid our taxes and how I felt about the new guys in town coming in. Um, prime example, there was a development in Murrayville that was roughly about 20 homes. People lived there 30-plus years, never had any problem with flooding. They moved in a new development a few years ago, Murrayville Crossing, those homes flooded. My point being, you know, it's all these new developments being put up which brings children, which changes dynamics. I know, I'm not saying no to growth, but just keep that in mind again. Like I said with my situation, I'm just trying to keep my daughter where she is. And I appreciate you listening to me. Have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda is a head start report. Mr. Shell.
I say this every month, but I think the community needs to hear. Head start is a federally funded pre-K program of 260 children that New Hanover County schools took over four or five years ago. New Hanover has done an excellent job with it, but we have a monthly meeting to let the community know what we're doing and how we're doing, and we report on the financials associated with that. And this board of seven school board members sit as a fiduciary in that capacity. So it's a very serious business, and my job is liaison, serving the board in this capacity is to give you a report on those items for this month. So if you can bring up the first item on the screen. As you can see, we have expenditure reports, and I'm looking up there. We've got two things going on. One, we have the 12-month ending for the last grant year, and then we have the three months ending. We'll talk about the expenditures for the current year that we're in. And then we had a third item, does not show appear, to talk about our in-kind report. So are you able to bring the reports up on the screen? Oh, you're not? Okay. Um, okay. The in-kind report is a report on the support that New Hanover County Schools gives to this program. This program, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do recall it's $1.97 million budget. And the schools do a nice job of providing for those children within that budget. And the April report, which is in your packet but not on the screen here, so you do have it, shows that the schools spent all but $164 of that $197,000, excuse me, $1.9 million budget. So extraordinary effort to provide and to account, and that's what that report gives you. The second item, and that year is finished, Mary Hazel, do you have anything you want to add to it from an audit perspective? Okay, you're good? Okay. And then the current year, we're three months into our 12-month year, which is three twelfths or 25 percent of the year gone by, and we've spent less than 20 percent year-to-date at this point. You expect that due to the slowdowns in the summertime, you catch back up. So I met with Shannon Smiles, who was not able to be here tonight, and we talked about those reports. But everything is in good financial shape, and the audit was done well. In-kind report is very similar to what you saw last year. It takes into account all the things that the school system provides, such as IT and maintenance, facilities, and things of that nature. One item to, on the horizon, that it's not in our report, but you will see in the coming quarter, is that the schools, this board approved, a request from the federal government for a cost of living adjustment for that grant and received it. It will be about $55,000, and it will come to you in the form of a budget amendment in the coming quarter. That's all I have for you unless you have questions of me tonight.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you. Next item on our agenda is for information, 2017, 2018 facility use report, appendix C, Ms. Quatabon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, you have the 2017, 2018 facility use report for your information, and I ask that you would review it and let us know if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Quatabon about this report? Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Shell. Go ahead, I saw you first.
Can you talk a little bit about the revenue that was brought in for the year and your perspective on it?
Yes, sir. We brought in a little bit over $100,000, and it's down $43,000 and change from last year, and that's mostly because some of the churches moved out, they were able to build their own facilities, so they're no longer renting from us. But we still do a robust business with the community.
So from your perspective, in terms of what we offer to the community in using this, it is a real plus for the community?
Oh, absolutely. They enjoy using our facilities, and they're looking forward to us bringing them back online once we get past this recovery stage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And please note, a lot of our facilities, we don't charge for if it involves our students. You changed that policy, I believe it was three years ago. So we charge for the custodial, so there's a lot of use from the community that is not, that is simply not, we don't charge.
Ms. Kavanaugh, do you have a question?
No, I didn't, thank you.
Okay. But the insurance requirement is still...
Correct.
That causes the problem for some smaller groups, doesn't it?
Yeah, we require that you're going to be in a building, you've got to have insurance if somebody's injured, and you can purchase one-time insurance for a fairly nominal fee for some events.
Any other questions? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Quatabon.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next item, consensus items, personnel, appendix C, Dr. Welmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Recommend that the board approves personnel matters as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Let's get the substituting.
Go ahead and finish your...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Let me go ahead and finish this, and we'll come back to superintendent's report. Okay, I'm sorry. I looked down, I apologize. All right. Any question or discussion of the personnel?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, do we have many openings, and if so, in what areas? What are our hardest to fill areas right now?
Not that many in the hard-to-fill areas, there's still a couple, but overall, we're doing, right now, we're doing pretty well.
What would be considered our hard-to-fill areas at the moment?
Science, special ed, still in math.
Math.
Still those areas.
Bus drivers.
Bus drivers. Sorry, Eddie, bus drivers.
How many openings do you think we have? Not exact, but I mean just roughly, I mean, we have four, five, six?
About 12.
That's what I was going to say.
About 12.
Some of those are new positions that the schools are...
I'm sorry.
Some of those are new positions that schools are...
And we just haven't been able to fill them yet?
Right.
Okay.
What are our toughest areas? I know, obviously, bus drivers, but other than bus drivers, what are our toughest areas in terms of retention?
Special education would probably be up there. Science, jobs that have, in an economy with 3% unemployment, there are a lot of jobs that transfer directly into the private sector, and those become competitive as well, math, science, those areas.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, while I'm at it, I'm going to go ahead and just finish consensus items if you don't mind, then we'll go back to superintendent's report. Budget amendment number one, appendix F, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out a couple of things with this first budget amendment. It's a pretty large one because this is the one where we're budgeting the carryover of our capital projects that rolled over from the prior year. So that's the majority of this, but we also have the, on the 26th of September, you approved a $4 million fund balance in a more informal budget amendment, so that's included in this official one that summarized with the total budget. And that was $4 million. There'll be another amendment a little bit later in the agenda to appropriate some more, but this is what you did on the 26th, as well as the carryover in our, for funds that were remaining in school balances last year and in outstanding projects in the general fund. We carried those over as well.
Please for approval.
I have a motion, I'll hear a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
The, I noticed, I understand the carryover.
Yes.
I understand you've got a project that's going on, the year-end hits June 30, and so then you start a new year, and then you record a budget amendment to bring it back in active, right?
Right.
Now, is there a reason that it takes this long to get back? Is that because of audit work?
We generally wait till all the audit accruals are done, and so we generally finish that up by the end of August, so we sort of miss the, you know, we would bring it to the September meeting, but it's a little bit later this time, so...
But the project is continuing to move forward even though it's not active.
Right. We carry over the money, whatever the balance is for these, because the board has approved those as longer-term projects. It's just the accounting rules for school systems require us to bring it back to you every time. So we go ahead and key the carryover, we adjust the balances once we accrue expenses back to last year, and bring you the net one time. We used to bring all the adjustments, it was a little bit confusing, so we just bring it to you once.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Small or Dr. Mark? We talked about the $4 million that we moved over to the maintenance fund. What would have happened, because I'm seeing some other school districts kind of in the area having some money issues, what would have happened if we didn't have any money to move over? How do we pay bills? How do we fix schools? How do we do those things?
We're going to talk a little more about that in the hurricane update, but in general, if those, we saved the money by having money, if that makes sense. Our ability to get into schools literally the day after the rain stopped and start mitigating that damage prevented us from having to spend even more money to fix some of those schools. Your fund balance, which is 5%, which is not a huge fund balance, but our budget, remember, is almost $300 million, allowed us and Eddie's folks to contract with companies to begin that mitigation work. And that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars going in. Now, if we did not have that money, we would not be in school today. We would be in a similar position of having to go to the county commissioners and ask for funds. And the county commissioners right now are dealing with their own set of issues related to the hurricane and expenses related to those. So having a fund balance allowed us to get in there faster, also to get the contracts we wanted before other folks could get them and begin that work. Eddie, anything you want to add to that?
No. I would. I'd just like to add to Mr. Workman's comment that if we were not, and yours, if we were not in that position, we would not be in a position to cure things, but also, if this had been a category three, like it was projected at one point in time, we would probably have had to borrow money on top of the fund balance we used.
And mitigation is some of the things, example, you can see it in here. Water came through the windows and hit the sheet rock at a lot of our schools, much like it did here in the Board Center. And so we were able to go in, tear out that wet board, and replace it before it could sit there and just become even more damaged over time.
I think it's important to also note that our county commissioners recognize the importance of us having a fund balance. I have been at some meetings with the states, at State School Board Association, where I've had an opportunity to talk to school board members from other counties, and some of those counties have pretty much taken the attitude that we are your bankers, you don't need a fund balance. I know there's one school district in North Carolina, their fund balance is $100,000, and their county commissioner said, "Well, we've got a fund balance, so you can come back to us." But as has been suggested, you know, if that had been the case, and thank goodness it's not down here, but if that had been the case here with all the other stuff they've got going on, I don't know exactly how fast they would have been able to respond to our needs. So I want to thank the county commissioners for their willingness. I mean, they've talked about our fund balance in the past, but their willingness to let us carry a fund balance of 5%, 6%, something like that, so that we do have money to be able to address these needs as they come along.
When Bradley Creek burned down, and we no longer had a building, and we had to scramble for money to try and replace the building, those are the kinds of disasters that the fund balance covers.
Yes.
And if we had, if we had three or four schools that were essentially demolished, we would have been in bad trouble. Do we carry wind and hail coverage?
We're going to go through all of that in the hurricane briefing. Now, you've still got to move the question on that, you've still got to move the question here.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, I believe. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, now, Dr. Markley, I'll go back to superintendent's report.
All right, we're going to do a quick overview on the hurricane, give you a little bit, some of the information you know, some of it you don't, but for a lot of folks, this may, maybe give them some background. I'll ask senior staff to chime in at any point that I make a mistake, or they can explain it better than I can. As you know, hurricane made landfall near Wrightsville Beach. It was a dead hit on September 14th, 90-plus mile an hour winds, highest recorded winds here in a long time. Statewide, there were 51 fatalities, 39 of them here in North Carolina, nine deaths in South Carolina. Nearly 2 million people had to evacuate, which is probably the largest evacuation in my memory, and I've been in North Carolina now for well over two decades. So how did that impact us here in New Hanover? Pre-storm, and this is a question we got, you get phone calls from all over the country asking questions, but we do a pre-storm checklist. We've done this for every hurricane. Our principals and our custodians go through this. Schools are inspected, they prepare the outside, they move things inside. Facilities such as playgrounds are checked, sandbags are pre-positioned, maintenance staff inspects, we work with the county's EOC. We shut down our computer networks and servers to try to protect as much equipment as possible. So there's a pretty standard process that's in place, and this goes back to the days of Bill Hans, even before Eddie's, these procedures. During the storm, New Hanover County is in charge of the shelters, but we worked those shelters. We have folks who go to the emergency operations center and staff there to help with questions. We also provide, our principals serve in those shelters, along with custodians and with our cafeteria folks. They're the ones that provide the meals in those shelters. We also provided fuel to tankers to the county when they needed fuel. Our bus drivers came out in the middle of the night to move folks at the request of the county when they needed it. When we closed down and consolidated the shelters, it was the Hanover County bus drivers who drove those buses to the shelters. Cannot say enough good things about the people who work in this county. A lot of our folks evacuated, so folks who had never served in shelters stepped up and served. Doc Holliday spent some time at Cottington, I spent some time at Trask, just about everybody over that table spent time at the EOC. And in the case of where I was at at Trask, the custodian was there for five straight days because we couldn't, because he was the only one that was available to go there. Similar situation at Cottington. The Wrightsville Beach custodian went to the Cottington shelter and served five days there. And there are, those are the kinds of stories you hear all across the district from our folks. Amazing work by our people during the storm. Post-storm, immediately we did our post-storm checklist. That's when the principal, custodians head out. They look at what's happening in the building and do an initial assessment. Then we started mobilization and stabilization of the schools, environmental assessments. I can walk in here and look at a wall and it may look okay, but that wall may be retaining moisture. We contracted with a local company and they go out and they'll do moisture tests on the walls. And some of the walls the principals may have seen that looked okay, we've gone back and had to report those walls out. We began what we call like-for-like building repair. Eddie, anything you want to add to this part?
No, just the like-to-like would be, you know, the sheetrock here. If we tore out the sheetrock, we would put it back. In a lot of cases, we were doing temporary repairs. The roof is a great example. If we were able to make a temporary repair to, you know, stop the leak, then we would do so so that we could bid out the permanent repairs later.
Had you not done this type of thing, you'd have moisture in those walls and then potential mold and mildew, that kind of thing.
Exactly, and I, yeah, we were talking about this earlier today and Dr. Markley mentioned it. I really credit not only our staff, but the contractors and the contracting community that really stepped up. And, you know, the availability of those guys and the willingness to get into our schools, a lot of times before we had power. You know, they were working on generators and we were drying out the schools. We were pulling out construction materials, debris, sometimes furniture and equipment that was wet. But whatever was wet, it was critical to get that out of the building, get power back on and get our air systems flowing again.
Process-wise, when we have an emergency, you've, I've got authority based on board policy to expend funds. So I appropriated that first million in anticipation of bringing you that budget order. Then we had the second meeting where we approved that first million and added $3 million to that. Three companies, Jarvis out of Florida, and then two local companies, Jordan and Montivee, cannot say enough good things about the work that they have done in our buildings in terms of getting, helping get back up and ready. So all schools were reopened October 4th with the exception of College Park. College Park had probably the most significant damage of any of our schools, and I'll let Eddie talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Gregory and Williams reopened, will reopen, oh, excuse me, on October 4th as well. They're attending Snipes, Williams is attending Cottington. They will be back in their schools next week. That work is scheduled to be done before then. Majority of our buildings suffered minor damage. Repair work was isolated to small areas within the building. There's more significant damage due to flooding at College Park and Gregory and Williams, that's why it's going to take a little bit longer there. There are some areas of schools that we're not able to use. For example, the cafeteria at Pine Valley. Kitchen is okay, so the students are eating in classrooms, so, but they're back in school. The auditorium at Snipes had water damage, so that's off limits until they can fully repair that. Four mobile units at Parsley. Alderman had a tree fall on one of their mobile units. So there are parts of the county where there are different, where there are some areas that we're not able to use every space in that building. Preliminary cost estimates are about $9 million for cleanup and repair. And we're estimating that before we're all done, it'll be in the $15 to $20 million range. Eddie, anything you want to say under the condition of College Park?
When you say College Park, can you explain?
Yes, I would remind folks that we, College Park is in a temporary location at Sidbury Road, a building most folks know as The Rock. There are 16 mobile unit classrooms out there. They suffered damage as well. They were relocated to the complex with Holly Shelter and Castle Hain. Cannot say enough about the way that happened. We were concerned we weren't going to be able to make the deadline to open. And on the Tuesday before we were going to return, about 200 of our employees from across the county went up there to make sure those classrooms got moved. Kristoff Hollins, who's our principal of the year, put out the call and the folks came. So it's an amazing display of teamwork from our folks up there. So this, Eddie's going to give us an update on College Park slash Sidbury.
Yeah, I think, you know, College Park is a great example of what can happen. You know, I would, when you're not able to get in there and mitigate, remove the moisture from the building, things turn bad pretty quick. We were actually unable to get to College Park for a little while right after the storm. And I was probably one of the first ones in the building and it didn't, it really didn't look that bad. And, but we had no power and within a couple of days, you really started to see where moisture was trapped in the building, where it had come in through doors and walls. And there was one, there was one roof leak, but most of the water came through the doors and walls and windows there. And so we're making good progress. What we're planning to do at this point is, you know, complete the cleanup and demo and then look at possibly some of the repairs being rolled into the future C-Tech renovation project.
So Gregory and Williams will return to their schools on Monday. College Park will remain indefinitely where they're located up there at the Holly Shelter complex.
Can you also talk a little bit about, you know, we've moved K-3 classes to Castle Hain from College Park. Does that affect class size?
Yes, and that's later, well, I'll talk a little bit about that later, but I've requested a waiver to the state for K-3 class size, not only for that, for their schools, but for Parsley as well. Since they've had to move their trailers inside, they've had to combine some of their classrooms there as well.
The mobile units at College Park up at Sidbury, was the main damage there, the building, The Rock, so to speak? Or the, because, how about mobile units in other schools? Did they suffer as greatly as the ones there at Sidbury? Or was it mainly the buildings?
The building itself suffered most of the damage, but we did have a lot of, we did have some damage in the mobile units. It was more extensive than we initially thought, once we started doing the tear out, which is why we, you know, made, ultimately made the decision to move College Park in their entirety. Throughout the district, I would say that, you know, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to why we had damage in some and not in others. And in a lot of cases, we would have, you know, damage to one on a site that has five. And, but for whatever reason, the wind was blowing in that direction, or in the case of Alderman, we had a tree fall on the unit, so. But we had quite a few mobile units that did have damage from the storm.
So with the module units there at Sidbury for College Park, that mainly was rain damage, wind blowing in the rain, or was it the roof, or what?
It was mainly wind and rain damage.
So do we have? Those are new modules, is that correct? They were?
No, ma'am, at Sidbury, they're older units, they're leased units.
But they weren't new? I know we leased them, but they weren't?
No, no, ma'am, they were not new.
So do we have wind and hail coverage?
We have wind and hail. Like I said, I'm going to go into a little, a lot more detail about insurance in just a moment. So the budget impact, $9 million budgeted for initial repairs and content, $6 million fund balance appropriation. You're going to see a budget amendment number two tonight that we'll go into more detail when we come to that for an additional $2 million. We're also going to budget $3 million in estimated insurance proceeds. So it's too soon to know how much we'll actually get from insurance and FEMA or the timelines on that. But any reimbursements beyond $3 million, then we'll use those to replenish our fund balance. The governor's approved $25 million with a priority for eight counties to include ours. We have not seen the process of the procedures, how to access those funds yet, that was just announced today. Questions about employee compensation? We've seen the state hurricane relief bill, Senate Bill Two, allowed for us to continue to pay employees during missed days. Employees were compensated as if they were there. That's an important thing for our employees, especially for some of our employees who are paycheck-to-paycheck employees. This applies to all salary, hourly employees. It included long-term subs, but not daily subs. So if you weren't called in that day, we wouldn't pay you just for being on the sub list. It excluded employees who are on a medical or an educational leave of absence. They might have put in six months ago to be off those days for a medical reason. Those days weren't, you would have still been off for the medical reasons. Our employees were, are required to use leave from missed days, starting from the dates they were scheduled to return to work. The one group that's never covered by that is child nutrition because it's a federal program, but the state set up a special appropriation for child nutrition salaries to be paid to offset that as well.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Employees that stepped up and worked many, many extra hours.
That's your next slide.
Okay.
I have a question, just a financial question.
Yes, sir.
Child nutrition is like an enterprise operation.
Correct.
I note that right now, nobody is paying for any breakfast or lunches. Is that going to severely negatively impact the enterprise fund for child nutrition? Or do we expect to get some reimbursement from the federal government or the state for those meals?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, because the federal government declared us a disaster area, they provided free meals for all students, so we will do reimbursements for all students.
That's correct. The reason they were reimbursing us additional money for the days we were closed is because there won't, there would not be federal revenue for that. So the state's picking up the difference. But once we're open and serving those free meals, the state, the federal government will cover.
Okay, thank you. Extra pay for those who worked during the storm. This is in compliance with your board policy. Employee who's worked during the storm, during the declared disaster were compensated as followed. Non-exempt were paid overtime premiums for all hours worked while they were on the clock. So it was, they got their regular pay from the state and we paid the time and a half piece, the half piece of that. Exempt employees were paid for hours beyond the standard workday and $100 stipend if they worked at least four hours during that workday. Hours were tracked by type, pre-storm, prep, shelter hours, restoration hours, and documentation to any eligible reimbursements. And we can also apply to our insurance company and FEMA for reimbursements on those.
Thank you, and that explained it, but I guess the operational side of it is to get them paid. That's part of the budget amendment, the $4 million budget amendment?
The salaries, we have not really budgeted for that yet. Most of the salaries were already covered. The extra amounts are paid, hopefully we'll get reimbursed for quite a bit of that. Most of what we budgeted, and we're just covering the difference right now in our existing salary budget. The $9 million is really focused on the operational side right now, not salary side.
Okay.
All right, insurance in FEMA, here we go. Potential sources of funds, we have flood insurance through the Hartford at four of our schools, Wrightsville Beach, Carolina Beach, Snipes and Forest Hills. Those adjusters have been in and are, we are working those claims now. Mr. Bullitt heads up, works with Julie Moore, our insurance person, along with other staff members to process those claims. Anything you want to say about the flood insurance, Mr. Bullitt?
No, the Hartford's been really easy to work with and they have approved several of the claims pending us providing additional documentation in terms of estimates. And we expect payment in full on what is actually considered floodwater damage. Flood is different than rainwater, as we'll talk about in a little bit. Floodwater is obviously water that comes up from the ground as opposed to rainwater, which comes in through the roof, which is treated a little differently by our other insurance company.
Floodwater insurance through DPI is all the other buildings and most of our mobile units, except for a couple that are very, very old and it wasn't worth insuring. Coverage is secondary to Hartford for flood damage to the four schools that were covered by flood insurance. I will say DPI has been fairly good on flood insurance in terms of looking at the claims. For example, all of the boilers at New Hanover were damaged by flood and we've already put that out to bid to replace those. But that's probably as much positive news as I'll give you about DPI coverage here in a moment. Mr. Bullitt, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's an accurate statement so far.
Our contractors who we're working with are documenting every step of the way with photos and cost estimates, and that's what we'll use as part of our reimbursement process. Casualty insurance other than flood, and that covers all of our buildings to include the one we're in right now. DPI has said that exclusions in this policy means it will not pay for any damage caused by mold or mildew. And rainwater, unless the hurricane caused physical damage to the roof, walls, doors, windows, which in turn allowed the water to enter the building. So we're going to have a very long and probably difficult discussion with DPI over the course of the next several months. Our contention is that if the rain comes in and damages the sheetrock, it's water damage that we're dealing with. And counties in the southeast are all experiencing similar issues with the adjuster. We've had several conversations with it. I know one county, Onslow, has already retained, I believe has retained an outside attorney to help potentially recover some losses there. So there is a, issues with the adjuster with DPI and what they're going to cover and not cover, particularly as it relates to roof and water damage. But we will work through those and Wayne has been in consultation with several other counties and groups in terms of this. Wayne, anything you want to add here?
No, I think it's an ongoing process with DPI. We haven't gotten a formal denial from them. We just have a verb, some verbal information from their adjuster that came and looked at some of our school buildings in the last week or so. We expect a lot of discussions going forward. And we're also gathering information, which leads me to believe that DPI has been very inconsistent in how they've applied this in past storms and in other counties. So it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out with DPI. And of course, as Dr. Markley will get to in a minute, whatever is not paid for by DPI or the Hartford, we can apply to FEMA for reimbursement for.
Question on the rainwater. How else would it enter the building unless there were some physical damage?
Eddie, how else does rainwater get into a building?
I mean, the hurricane would blow and windows and so forth.
Right, well, these windows are a good example. I mean, you design buildings for rain falling from the sky. We do not design buildings for rain driven by wind at 90-plus miles an hour for two days. So, you know, you-
Insurance companies typically will not pay you for reimbursement for those expenses unless you have wind and hail damage and coverage.
We have wind and hail, but, and it's our contention that the wind drives the rain that causes the damage.
Yeah, because you're deductible. I don't know what our deductible is. I know as an individual, my deductible is 2% of the value of the house. So, you know, it's almost like you pay wind and hail insurance and you don't get anything back for it.
So would be at a loss if DPI denies coverage, you said there's another step.
There's another step with FEMA, so there's a potential to recover there, but that's a much slower process.
And how much, how much are we, do we think that by denial would originally cost the school system? Is there a number that you own that? Or a guesstimate?
I'd be guessing right now, until we actually see what the denials are. The other issue, of course, is there, in talking to area superintendents, is there being very picky on roof leaks? And basically saying that if it was a pre-existing leak, that's not damage from the hurricane. So that's another area we're going to look at very closely.
Being very picky on what, I didn't mean?
Roof leaks. Eddie, anything you want to add about that?
No.
Mary Hazel? I have spoken to our local representatives about this. They are aware of the issue and they will work with us.
DPI, what does DPI stand for?
Department of Public Instruction.
And that's a state?
Correct.
This is not national, is it?
No, this is information only. FEMA, both flood and rainwater damage, they'll pay for any damages not covered by our insurance. They pay 75% of approved damages and the state pays a matching 25% for FEMA. This is the long-run process. It's, insurance tends to be a much quicker turnaround. This could be a 12 to 18-month process to recoup these funds.
Yeah, you get what you pay for.
And I will tell you that since FEMA is sort of the last one in line, their paperwork is always the most complicated. So they typically pay the least, but pay for the most. And so Wayne is, they just changed all their bidding rules about six months ago and that has made this an even more interesting process.
I don't think the public fully appreciates not only what a school system or municipal or local government goes through to do the things you need to do to try to be prepared. Then when you have the event, you've got to take steps to make sure things don't get worse, like mold or moisture. And so you spend that- And so you spend that money to spend less money. You spend that money to try to position yourself, not only for safety and health, but also to minimize your cost. And I think that's the part that's very challenging, because you've spent that money, and then often FEMA or Department of Public Insurance could come in and say, where's the policy that supports you spending that money? And so you get into these sometimes ridiculous arguments long after the storm is gone, and you're prepared, and you're moving forward. And so you get into ridiculous arguments. I know the New Hanover County and the schools had six hurricanes, no, five hurricanes in six years in the nineties and early two thousand. And accountants have to account for that for five years. And you go through, the school system, the county governments, the city of Wilmington, and you go through an audit with the state, with the federal. And I can recall, and I don't mean to get long-winded, but I think you should hear it, is that, for example, I can remember when New Hanover County had three audits. FEMA audited twice, the state audited. And then when the five-year window was about to close, Inspector General decided to come in and audit with a month to go and denied about two million dollars' worth of claims, which we had to get federal elected senators involved for them to realize what they have. My point is that it is difficult, it is challenging. I appreciate what y'all are doing. So these discussions are important. I think the public needs to know the effort that you're making to get it right.
That's one of the reasons why I wanted to do this presentation tonight. You've seen a lot of this information, but a lot of folks don't understand the back work that goes through this. And decisions you've made in the past allow us to be in this position. We have an in-house attorney. A lot of districts around us don't have that luxury to start that process. We have a risk manager who can start this insurance process. Not only has Julie done work in terms of workers' comp and saving money, but she's saving us money now as we roll into this process. So we're ahead of the game. There's a reason why we were the first district back, and that's because of the folks who are in our district.
And that is, in some of the information you set out, apparently we have three times the number of homeless individuals in the county. Are they all housed by the Salvation Army? Are they at a particular site, or are they spread out?
Just about to get to students. Let me finish up with insurance, and then I'll roll into that. Claims process, we are notified of damages in general, it's done. Insurance adjusters are visiting sites where that's in progress. We're assembling claims, photos, bills, receipts, estimates, bids. We actually have Connex trailers of stuff that we took out of buildings that we have to keep to show loss. I don't know how long, Eddie, how long we have to keep some of that stuff?
Until the adjusters see it and approve it.
Yep. So then we go through the exception to denial of claims, and then we go to payment and dispute resolution. FEMA, same register for the reimbursements, we have done that. They appointed a representative who will call us in about two weeks. We go through our several meetings with them, claims documentation, very similar to insurance documentation, and again, the payment and dispute process. Talking about our students. We were closed for all staff and students on Tuesday, September eleventh, and that was only the tenth day of school. When we came back, it was day eleven. Twelve-month employees and principals returned on the twenty-fourth. Teachers in ten months returned on the second. Traditional students at Isaac Bear returned on the fourth as well. C-Tech and WEC did not return until the eighth, because Community College, that's when they returned. Year-round students returned October fifteenth. They're currently on what would be their intercession. We have submitted K-three class-size waivers for five schools, College Park, Castle Hain, Gregory, Parsley, and Mary C. Williams. Let me come back to calendar. I want to get to Ms. Kavanaugh's question. And that's the McKinney-Vento students. The number of McKinney-Vento students before the hurricane was about two hundred and ninety-five. Our current estimate is now six hundred and fifteen students listed as homeless based on McKinney-Vento.
I think you sent us the information that it was over nine hundred. So apparently, the numbers have been there.
Nine hundred was, I think, our number at the end of last year in the past. I'm not sure, Rick, do you know where the nine hundred number came from?
It fluctuates year to year. I mean, we have to go back, and we audit every year the numbers that we have and the population and stable housing for years. So our numbers are always over at the beginning of the year when they are given.
How do we handle children who are homeless? Do they remain in their home school, or they get a transportation to go to another school?
It's a combination of several things. For example, there are currently seventeen students who are at the Red Cross Shelter at Harbor United Methodist. We're sending a bus over there to pick those students up every day and take them to their home school or the nearest school. There are, I believe, several Pender County students who are now attending Bellamy, because that's the closest school to the shelter. Other folks have moved in with relatives, that's where the vast majority are. And we, as much as possible, try to accommodate their home school if that's their preference, or we're working with them in terms of a new school assignment. We just found out that they're going to close another apartment complex on Market Street, and we anticipate probably another forty students in that complex that we'll have to work with in terms of transportation. Dr. Holliday, anything you want to add to that?
Would you speak into your microphone, please?
It's just been very challenging at this point, as Dr. Markley said. There are lots of places that are, I mean, daily there are apartment complexes that are closing down. And we lost another apartment complex today that will, has about thirty-five, forty children that our folks have been working with. And we actually have, each family in that apartment unit has been given a case manager by our school system that had a family, that had a child in our schools. So we're trying to keep the children in the schools that they're in. Some of the children are not able to do that because their families take them out of state. And it becomes incredibly challenging. We had a couple of situations at the early colleges that those principals started working on trying to find their children pretty soon after the storm. And we were able to find them all and account for them all, but that's how we know that a couple of them aren't coming back to us. So that's on a larger scale in other schools as well.
The state sets your attendance based on day twenty. And that's one of the things we're going to have to work with the state on, is some kind of flexibility on setting our attendance number. Because on day twenty, we're still going to have students who haven't returned to us from possibly out-of-state locations or out-of-county locations. So that day twenty number is really critical in terms of setting your funding and your allotment. So we're going to need some flexibility around those numbers moving forward. And that's something we shared with both our local representatives, Senator Lee, and with Mark Johnson at the DPI. Mary Hazel, anything you want to add about the day twenty number?
Yes, we.
They did say today in a conference call that they're going to, even for all school systems, they're going to go with the end of October as the twentieth day, so that we're all sort of using the same date. But we still don't really understand the impact until, typically, funding they base on the first two months, but I think they're going to go with the one month this year.
It also affects transportation. Your transportation allotment is an efficiency formula based on the previous year. So this year's transportation money is based on last year's transportation formula. Well, a hurricane wreaks havoc with buses and where they're going. So there's the potential for this hurricane to impact our transportation formula for next year. So there's those consequences you think of, just not beyond the obvious ones. A lot of long-term implications on that. Anything else on the student impact before I go back to calendar? Dr. Holliday?
Just one more thing. We are on the other side of it. We are getting students as well. We are getting students from surrounding counties that have been displaced, that their parents have moved in with relatives here because they're out of their homes. So we will have some of that impact as well, just so that you understand that that will be happening as well.
I want to be sensitive to the children from other districts who have to be here. But how do we account for our policy of not allowing students from out-of-county?
If the parents here because of the storm, we're going to work with them.
Yeah, the policy allows for that, because actually what happens is the whole family has moved here. And even if it's a temporary fix, they've moved here, their home has been destroyed, or they can't get in their home. Now, what we have to be careful about is people who are saying, like, we had a couple today, contacters saying, well, they're not going to start Pender County schools until October the twentieth. We'd like to send our children across the border to your schools because they only live five hundred yards from the border. And we're like, no, can't do that, because they're not displaced. That's not, that's a situation trying to get in. But if someone has lost their home and they're moved into the county, and they moved in with relatives, or they're doubled up, or they're in a shelter, we will make arrangements for those children to be in school, and already have done so.
How do you determine whether or not this is just an in-run around our policy and/or whether it is?
Well, today, the couple that contacted us were not hard to determine because they were pretty transparent. You know, this is where we live, and this is what we want to do. And we were like, no. But the ones that are, that are, have been displaced, it's fairly obvious, the ones that have been displaced. And we can often verify it even talking with the other folks in the other schools. We do do our due diligence, but at the same time, it's like Dr. Markley said, we're really trying to work with people who are displaced and really have no other place to go. And we've had some of that.
All right, ready for the calendar discussion? Let me slide back. All right, I'm going to ask Dr. Smith to sort of walk us through this. Her and Mary Hazel have worked with this and run it by several of our principals and explaining it.
Yes, so in the graphic that you have on your screen, you can see that we started the school year with our traditional calendar with one hundred and eighty-one days. We've also shared with you the number of instructional hours that would allow us to have, the length of the instructional days, and the number of days of employment for teacher. And then below that, we've shared with you what it means for us post-hurricane. And I think something that's very important to understand is our goal here with the calendar recommendation is to recapture opportunities for instruction for our children. The state has supported us in making sure that teachers are not being burdened with losing employment or having to take leave to cover the time that we were out, and that our folks who are hourly employees are not losing their salary. But we want to make sure that we are meeting our obligation to children as well. So you'll see for traditional calendar, we are looking at having one hundred and sixty-six instructional days, down from the one eighty-one. But when you look at the length of the instructional day, I think that's where you'll really notice the difference. We're recommending going from three hundred and sixty minutes per day to three hundred and eighty. What that would mean for families would mean ten minutes on the front end of a school schedule and an additional ten minutes on the back end of a school schedule. We would begin that December first. That would help us to capture, I want to say about thirty instructional hours. Let's see. Thirty non-instructional hours, and that would be added back in. So almost six days we're going to capture that way. Also, we've shared with you with post-hurricane for each of these school calendars. And, you know, amazingly, we have none, the number of forgiven days. And so you'll see a huge difference in that with schools. But also, you'll see a big difference in the number of days missed. So transitioning to the year-round calendar, same information is being provided. Their year-round students would be in session one hundred and seventy-three days, but the same number of instructional hours, because we are not lengthening their day. You also see that those teachers are receiving seven forgiven days, and they only miss nine workdays. How we're doing this specifically for the traditional calendar, we're changing our four-half days that we have still available in the calendar to whole days.
These were professional development days that were built in. These aren't the days at the end, like, before Christmas break. So we had four PD days, half-days that we're going to eliminate and make full days.
Well, for the most part, yes. One thing that we are being, that we are doing is we are not taking away the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We thought that was very important to make that available to families. We know a lot of our newer teachers who don't have a lot of leave, travel, and with that being a day, we did not want to make that a workday. We wanted to make that a vacation day. So we are able to provide that. But we are adding back two vacation days into the calendar, and we're shifting those back to days that teachers have already missed. And as I said, we would be elongating the day starting December first.
I believe there's a Monday in there we're taking back.
And the Monday, that would be one of the vacation days. This year, and we, for the first time in, since I've been in this role, we were able to add into the calendar the Monday following Easter holiday. We are going to take that one back as an instructional day for students. But again, you can see the comparison to the two calendars, and how we get to those instructional hours, again, is very different for each school. So just shifting to year-round, what we're doing for those folks is we're changing the three-staff development half-days to full days, and we're adding back one full day, which is that April twenty-second date. So again, getting to the same place or a comparable place in the number of instructional hours, but having to do it very differently for each of the calendars.
The state sets one thousand and twenty-five as the minimum instructional hours. So we're still a little bit over that.
So may I ask a question here? So how many days did tradition, traditional lose?
So they missed seventeen days of instruction.
And then, so out of, down at the bottom, so down at the seventeen, we're making, and how many days did the state say we will allow you to forgive?
Up to twenty.
Up to twenty. So you could do nothing, but you are convinced that the children need more instruction. So you're trying to find a way. To get to ten twenty-five.
Yes. If we did, as you said, if we did nothing, then our children would have less than one thousand instructional hours for the school year. Whereas other schools, other students in other schools would have significantly more. Because again, traditional lost seventeen days year-round because of when their intercession fell, only lost nine.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
And you may be going to address it later on. There's a potentiality of another storm. And I guess all I'm asking, have we heard from the county emergency management as to whether or not they are going to be in need of any shelters? In which case, then that has a direct impact on some of this.
Correct. Had a conversation this afternoon with county officials. At this time, they are not going to open a shelter.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't mean it won't change, but at the current time, they're not going to.
So the anticipation is that we will not, if anything, we may start school a little late on a couple of days to make up for rain. But at this point in time, we do not anticipate missing any more days as a result of Michael.
I wouldn't, I'm not ready to tell you yes or no. If I was a guessing person, I would say Thursday is, we're looking very closely at Thursday. And part of the reason is if it comes in with forty mile-an-hour winds, we have a lot of debris and a lot of branches and things, so I'm concerned about that. Friday's actually supposed to be a pretty good day. So Thursday would be the day that I would be most concerned about.
I heard Brunswick, I think, is going back to school tomorrow. It's going to be closed Thursday and Friday. I thought was interesting that going back for one day.
We're, we'll look at, I really want to see when the storm hits and the direction it goes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, restart calendars, very similar to year-round calendars, just some little misses there. Pre-K, you can see their calendars as well. Anything you want to add there, Dr. Smith?
Just that for the restart, we will be making changes. Just that for the restart, we will be making changes within their intercessions, which will allow us to recapture school days for them, so you notice their day will not be elongated. With the restart pre-K, they actually do have a longer day, but that's because of the design of the instruction that they receive, but we are not extending their day.
Can you explain what restart is for the community and do that apply to?
Yes. Specifically, restart applies to Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, and also Rachel Freeman's School of Engineering. These are two schools for which the district applied for permission to reconfigure them, and so they have a calendar that's specific to them. They also have additional flexibility around how they staff and how they use their funding with the idea of giving that greater flexibility to the school and to the school system to restart the services that they provide to their students in such a way that they're going to be even more effective than they were previously or prior to restart.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
So WECs and IBEC have slightly altered calendars as well, and a lot of it has to align with community college and university calendars. CTEC, same way, and then pre-K, Lake Forest, which is on its own kind of schedule. So we'll bring formal calendars for approval at the November meeting, but the general gist of it is for traditional, 10 minutes in the morning, 10 minutes in the afternoon, elimination of half-days that were for PD, and the Monday after Easter.
And just for clarification and for the public, we are wanting to make some slight tweaks ahead of the November meeting, which would be having the October 26th teacher workday be a full day for students. That would need to occur beforehand, and then also the November 6th day for the election, we want to make sure that that remains the same within the calendar. So I think those are the two big things prior to the board's formal approval of calendar changes.
We will also alter the end of the first nine weeks and end of the first semester.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Markley.
You may want to also mention, I'm not, I think you may have covered it, but one of the other days to be made up in the traditional calendar is the Friday before the Christmas holiday, so that was one of, that Friday as well as the Easter Monday.
Yep.
So it'd be those two days plus the four half-days-
Plus the half-days.
Plus the 20-minute-
Plus 10 and 10, yep.
That's basically it.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good Lord willing, no more storms, no snow, no ice, no more hurricanes.
But even with these changes, we do still have a little bit of flexibility that we would not necessarily have to come back. We could still meet the state requirement for instructional hours with these changes.
One of the things I want to talk about is the outpouring of support we have seen, not just from our community, but from across the country. Valida and her team have been coordinating donations, and I'll ask her just to sort of run down what you're seeing here.
Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory, but we've had people reach out to us from all across America wanting to help us, and they have sent dozens of all types of school supplies and book bags, so much so that we've had to ask them to stop because we're kind of overwhelmed, because the community has also at the same time, like for instance, College Park and Castle Hain, they have more, so much stuff, Mr. Highsmith had to say, Miss Quabam, enough, Walmart, Publix, everybody just keeps giving us stuff. So the warehouse people are working with us to distribute it as soon as it comes in, they're divvying it up and sending it to the schools, so it's really been a blessing and amazing.
Now, there are specific things that schools are asking for. One of the things in particular, almost every classroom, if you've been into a classroom, has what you call a reading rug up near the front of the classroom, and at College Park and a lot of our schools, those were wet and they had to go. And those aren't things that you typically can think about with a donation, but those are examples of things that if we're, if they're sending donations, are some of the specific things that they're looking for. Locally, how many churches here fed folks while we were out? I can't say enough good things about Nourish NC. They've been an amazing partner. David helped organize one of the churches downtown. Those are the kinds of things that happened beyond just these donations. You've probably seen pictures of our students everywhere on those two weeks they were out, helping out. They weren't playing sports, but they were definitely a team, and they were, they were working for folks in the community. It's those kinds of things that make you proud that you live where you live. So these are current requests, 45 schools in 21 states, this is just a list of some of those schools that have donated to us from literally all over the country. Communications, if this had happened 15 years ago, it would be a different story in a lot of respects. Cell phones, were at one, at some points were the only communications that we had until some of those batteries ran out. But a lot of groups stepped up and just the ability to keep in communications, and there's just some of the things that happened here. Now, if you still want to donate, our website is there with instructions. And this one's a, we've started to collect some of the stories, and this is one of those stories, and I'm going to ask them to just sort of play this for you.
Just total destruction on that complete side of the house.
Amy Riggs recounts the moment she walked into her home for the first time after Hurricane Florence.
Sad, mad, angry, but then extremely grateful that we were not here and we did the right thing by evacuating, and that we had our lives and our son was completely taken care of.
She and her husband, Michael, took their son to Asheville to get away from the storm. While they were gone, a neighbor sent them pictures of the house, but it wasn't until they returned to Wilmington that they truly understood just how bad the damage really was.
This is where part of it fell, through the roof and the rafters here. No walls, no ceiling through the rafters, everything gone through the kitchen and the living room, just nothing you could ever imagine, just seeing complete destruction like that. The tree was inside the house, 100-year-old oak. So it was a full week of all that wind and rain, the rain just coming and pumping in, so it did flood, and the floors are going to have to be pulled up, and the mold is just like wildfire, the mold is so fast.
I've rode some storms out, but I've never seen nothing this bad as far as the damage and just people being out of work and power and flood.
Her fifth-grade son, Mason, goes to Pine Valley Elementary and says the entire ordeal has been really hard for him.
It's kind of traumatizing for me, but I keep thinking about all the good moments and all of the good things that'll happen when we get the tree out and everything.
And unfortunately, they don't have the insurance they need to make repairs. About six months ago, Riggs made the difficult decision to cancel it.
We either had to pay for childcare or wind and hail, and we just had to go with childcare, so.
But in the midst of hardship, there has been a ray of hope.
We've had great community support from some educators, from teachers from Pine Valley that have reached out and even come by and helped community friends from the school, just a lot of support, overwhelming support. And Miss Angie Vine brought new scrub tops for me to work and socks, because I was wearing my son's socks, and they've just been, they've helped with the GoFundMe page.
More people has come to aid and help this time than, you know, any time I've seen, you know, churches and everybody from young to old, just helping out, doing what they can, you know?
Many groups of people are collecting all sorts of school supplies that will be distributed to the schools. The school system will keep track of all students who have been displaced due to Hurricane Florence, and they will make sure through, by contacting the school social worker, that any needs that need to be met will be taken care of for the students.
It's made me feel really happy, and it's just made me know that there's so many good people in this world, always there to help people.
And while a lot of the house may be gone, Riggs says their family is determined to make it a home again with the help of friends, family, and the Kate Figer community they love so much.
We all grew up here, I did, all of my cousins, we had all of our family dinners here, and holidays were spent here. My grandma cooked every holiday meal in that kitchen, so when that tree went through it, it took a lot of us with it. A lot of those memories of grandma cooking those turkeys and cooking the different things and all the cakes and all the baking that she did, and all the meals that were ate around that table, it just, it took that piece of our heart from us, but we'll rebuild it even better.
If you check out our website, you'll find stories of teachers, as well as administrators, and the things that have happened during the hurricane. Anything I've missed, folks, over there that we need to cover? Board members, any questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you, Dr. Markley and the staff for all that information.
All right, next I have. How long do you think this is going to take? Should we take a break?
Let's take a break.
All right, we're going to take a break, and let's try to keep fairly.
Good try.